Okay, we call our meeting to order. Please stand and salute the flag. Right after the salute of the flag, would you please remain standing for a moment of silence? And tonight, we have a special guest with us, Anthony Stewart, who's earned his Eagle Scout Award, so we're claiming that tonight. And I'm gonna ask Anthony if he'd please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Roll call.
Chairman Quackenbush.
Present.
Legislator Diamond.
Present.
Legislator White.
Present.
Legislator Beenyac.
Present.
Legislator De Chessy.
Here.
Legislator Wheeler.
Here.
Legislator Isabel.
Here.
Legislator Koochus.
Here.
Legislator County.
Present.
I look for a motion to suspend the rules tonight to add two resolutions. One is a resolution and a statement of support for ending the tobacco marketing in stores. We're gonna hear a presentation in a few minutes. And also, the county executive would like to give us a presentation at the June meeting in regards to the financials of this county. And he's projecting that to be about 45 minutes. And rather than to call a special meeting, we thought it would be, Matt and I talked about it, and if we could just change our meeting time to 5:30 rather than starting at 7:00, that would do it. So I would look for, or I'll sponsor, a motion to suspend the rules if there's a second, Ryan, discussion on suspending the rules, to add those two resolutions, and they will be at the end of the agenda. Hearing not all those in favor to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Just don't let me forget to add those. All right, public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to address the legislature? Now is the time to do that. Just a minute.
Hi, my name's Alex Bencini. I know some of you, I live, some of you don't, I live on Hickory Hill Road in the town of Mohawk. You may or may not be aware of the road conditions up there. That road has deteriorated significantly. I've lived there for 30 years, and probably over the past 10 or 15 years, it's gotten progressively worse in terms of drainage and flooding. I have a petition that I want to present to, but I suppose I'd probably be better off reading it, it'll explain the whole thing. Persistent flooding and lack of drainage occurs several times each winter and spring on Hickory Hill Road. This issue has progressively gotten worse over the past 10 to 15 years, and poses danger to drivers, pedestrians, and residents. It's also a source of property damage. Therefore, we, the residents of Hickory Hill Road, Town of Mohawk, formally request the Montgomery County Legislature, Department of Transportation to correct this problem in an immediate and efficient manner. I didn't, I wasn't able to secure everybody's signatures because I couldn't get ahold of them, they might not be home, and so on and so forth. But I would say a good 85% of the people from the top of Hickory Hill Road where the Cattery, Teckahwith, the Indian villages, all the way through to Pavilas Lane. And, you know, every person has really basically said that, you know, the flooding's bad. There are senior citizens there that can't, literally, can I get across the street when we have those, you know, those thaws? And they're getting worse. I think the trade derailment didn't do us any favors, you know, it was past summer with all that heavy equipment going on there. And if you ever took a ride up there, you would see that the westbound lane is just the outside third of it is just crumbling, probably from the constant flooding. And, you know, it's gotta be done. I mean, sellers have flooded, I know a person put a new garage, that flooded, and all the concrete is cracked. So, you know, I mean, those are the types of things. We got a person up there that had to redig the foundation of their home. And, you know, anyway, anything that you can do to address this situation in an immediate way and in an efficient manner would be greatly appreciated. As God used to follow politics, Tip O'Neill once said, "All politics is local," and I can tell you from the locals up on Hickory Hill Road that this is the number one issue. So I appreciate your time, and I'd like to present this to the board now. Take that.
Alex, we, Terry is the chair of that committee, so he'll be in contact with-
With Paul.
With Paul, our Public Works Commissioner.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else from the public wishing to address the legislature? Okay, that'll under public comment. At this time, we have two proclamations tonight. The first, long, long, long time county employee, Nick Bartosik, is retired. Nick, if you'd come forward, we have a proclamation for you. How are you tonight, Nick?
Good.
I hope you're enjoying retirement already.
I am.
Okay, proclamation honoring the retirement of Nicholas M. Bartosik, Director of Weights and Measures. Whereas Nick Bartosik has been the Director of the Montgomery County Weights and Measures Department, working cooperatively with the state of New York for the last 18 years to protect consumers and the businesses of Montgomery County, to provide measurement accuracy, to promote a fair and equitable marketplace. And whereas most people take for granted that the measurements that affect them every day of the year are accurate, and luckily for the people of Montgomery County, there's been a dedicated individual working to assure the buyers get what they pay for, and sellers have a marketplace that is based on fair competition. And whereas on April 29th, 2014, Nick retired from Montgomery County after a long and distinguished career. Over the years, Nick has made a lasting contribution to the county by interacting with the consumers and businesses, and serving as a friend and role model to many throughout his career. And whereas being a very civic-minded individual, Nick has also worked many volunteer hours for his community, serving as a firefighter for the Hagaman Fire Department for nearly 30 years, a member of the Montgomery County Fire Advisory Board, and as a member of the Town of Amsterdam Planning Board. And whereas in addition to being a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, he is devoted husband, father of two, and grandfather of three. Hope we got all that right. Now therefore resolved, I, Thomas L. Quackenbush, Chairman of the Montgomery County Legislature, in conjunction with the Montgomery County Legislature, on behalf of the consumers and businesses of Montgomery County, do hereby express heartfelt appreciation to Nicholas M. Bartosik for his loyal and dedicated service. I extend my personal best wishes upon his retirement and for continued success in life's pursuits. Done under my hand and seal this 27th day of May, 2014. Thomas L. Quackenbush, Chairman, Montgomery County Legislature. Nick.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a pleasure serving in that capacity and serving the people of the county. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Next this evening, another very special proclamation. We have a young fellow with us today. His name is Anthony Stewart. Anthony, if you'd come forward. Anthony has obtained, has or is in the process, or are you there yet?
I am.
You've done it.
Yes.
He's actually obtained a most prestigious honor, right? And that of an Eagle Scout. So we at Montgomery County want to recognize Anthony for his hard work and achievement. And by doing so, we're gonna read you a proclamation and honor you with that. A proclamation honoring Anthony Stewart Eagle Scout. Whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical, moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling them the values of the scout oath and law. And scouts achieve their ranking by fulfilling requirements in areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. And whereas Anthony Stewart started as a Tiger Scout and Cub Scouts when he was in the first grade, he continued with the Cub Scouts through 5th grade, earning his Wolf, Bear, and Weeblow's ranks. Anthony achieved the highest rank in Cub Scouting when he earned his Arrow of Light Award. He continued in Boy Scouts through his senior year in high school, starting as scout and moving up to earn Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star Life, and eventually the highest rank in Boy Scouts, Eagle. And whereas during Boy Scouts, Anthony demonstrated leadership as a patrol leader and senior patrol leader, and was always willing to help the younger scouts. He also actively participated in many community service events. Anthony gave back to his local community through his Eagle Project, which was a revitalization project for the Hagaman Park. Anthony orchestrated and planned his project to oversee the scout troop, build and install a new bench, two picnic tables at the park, and repainted the playground equipment that was faded and peeling, including the monkey bars, the swing set, and the play turtle. He used his leadership skills to lead the scout troop in helping them accomplish this project. Whereas currently Anthony is attending Clarkson University at Pottstam, great school, studying electrical engineering, and is excelling academically, being named in the Principal Scholar List, first semester, and Dean's List, second semester. Now therefore, the Montgomery County Legislature, on behalf of all of its residents, recognizes the bright and outstanding young man for receiving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America, and also for his many accomplishments academically and throughout his community service. Done under my hand and seal this 27th day of May, 2014. Thomas L. Quackenbush, Chairman, Montgomery County Legislature. Anthony, congratulations.
I'd be very proud, and I'm sure you are. Thank you.
Also tonight, we have a presentation. Susan Arminio, Project Coordinator of Project Action. The floor is yours.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sue Arminio, and I work for Project Action Tobacco Free Coalition, based out of St. Mary's Hospital. We serve Hamilton, Fulton, and Montgomery Counties. I've been with St. Mary's and Project Action for 10 years. And basically, what we're discussing tonight is statement of support for ending tobacco marketing in stores. Just recently, the Fulton County Board of Supervisors, they also just passed this resolution, and Philika Paganman passed this resolution last year. So we're making some headways, which is very exciting for this. What I want to discuss is some statistics in our county. Youth smoking is still a problem. According to the Surgeon General, tobacco use is a pediatric epidemic in the United States, with 3.6 million youth currently smoking cigarettes. 90% of smokers will smoke their first cigarette by the age of 18. In New York State, more than 132,000 high school students smoke, and every year, an additional 25,000, 22,500 kids under 18 become new daily smokers. The tobacco marketing in the stores is the primary cause of the youth smoking. In New York State, 80% of tobacco retailers devote most of their merchandising where? Behind the counter. And that is at their level for the kids to see. This gives the youth the impression that tobacco marketing and the products are easily accessible. They can see it, it's at their eye level, and right there when they go in. And the tobacco use is acceptable. Covering up these ads behind the register so they are not eye level with the youth when they walk into a retail store is one of our new initiatives. So I just wanted to show you, so basically, this is a palm card that we use in the community, and the youth sign it, and they write their message however they feel about tobacco marketing. And it says, "We've seen enough tobacco marketing in stores." And then, like I said, the youth write whatever they feel however tobacco marketing affects them. And it says, "Stop exposing us to tobacco marketing. The more we see, the more they smoke." And it really makes a lot of sense, because like I said, when they go into a store, what do you see right behind the cash register? It's a power wall, it's right there, it's very visible. And again, this is another postcard that we use in the community. It says, "This is tobacco marketing. Kids who see it are more likely to smoke. Our kids have seen enough." And it really is the truth. A lot of people after we do presentations, they say, "You know, we're just so busy in our daily lives, we don't really see that." And now when they go into community stores, they say, "Wow, I really do see that." Imagine what it'd be like if it was covered up, or wasn't there at all. This is a brochure that I just wanted to pass around and give you. It talks about from the Surgeon General, and also some statistics about tobacco marketing and the effect that it has on our youth. Lastly, but at least, I just wanted to say, this is the statement of support for ending tobacco marketing in stores. I won't read the whole thing, but basically, it just says that with the Montgomery County Legislature, if you support the work that Project Action, and also Reality Check, they do a lot with the youth, they have schedule conflict they couldn't make it, we both together work on this initiative. And it says, "Supporting tobacco marketing products out of consumer view inside all non-adult retail establishments." And that's really, you know, in a nutshell, what we're trying to do within the community. Just imagine if you went into a community store, a mom and pop store, and you didn't see that, what a difference, especially for the youth. Because that is our next generation, and the tobacco marketing, they know what they're doing, and they go after the youth. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just lost my mother to COPD, the fifth leading cause of death in this country. So I thank you for the work you do. I'm hoping, I have a 10-year-old, and I have very, I'm very optimistic for the youth and our next generation, so you do very good work.
Well, I just, I know, I just lost my own mother on the 9th, too smoking. So it makes it even more powerful, because it is a real thing, and, you know, we can protect the youth, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
As far as your resolution, do you need that for tonight's meeting, or can we run that through committee?
It's whatever the Montgomery County Legislature, if you want to discuss that, it's really-
But I think is there an urgency to it for you?
No, it's whatever, again, it's whatever the Montgomery County Legislature. So if you want to pass that, that's good. If you want to go back, but I would never-
Well, I think everyone's in favor of it.
Okay.
We do like just to run it through committee.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't know if that's the intent of everyone else, generally, that's what we do.
Whatever works for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have no minutes tonight, because we're trying to do this electronically with our, we're almost there, but we will approve those at the next, at the next meeting. Approval of the budgetary transfers, you all have a copy. Is there a motion to approve the budgetary transfers?
A motion.
Barbara, Joe, I have a motion and a second discussion.
Sure. Just a question, maybe somebody can clarify. There's two transfers on here for $5,000 from the same line to the same line, under the sheriff's office. And I was just curious, one's on the front, one's on the back. Curious, is this, and I don't know if anybody here can answer it, a consistent transfer that's being made, and is it something that we could resolve instead of doing it in this fashion?
I had an opportunity to speak with the sheriff, and I fully support it, but I don't know if it's something that we need to-
Sheriff, why don't you enlighten us?
We had a move in the sheriff's office on a deadline, and we didn't have funding in that line. We're not creating impositions, but we had actually downsized, downgraded a person's position. And we're transferring the money, we keep paying the person until the civil service is not in power, and we're away around. It's not, it's not gonna last forever.
Okay, thank you.
We also pointed out that in the charter, it says that a transfer can be made up to $4,999. It's just, you know, part of that new footing, getting used to the way things work here, but the sheriff, we addressed it, and that'll be taken care of. If in the future it needs to happen, it's gonna be under, technically under.
Yeah.
All right? With all that, is everyone in favor? Against, abstain, that carries unanimously. Unfinished business, we have a table resolution 103. It's a resolution appointing a member of the landfill management oversight panel. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Terry, is there a second?
No second.
Ryan? To bring it off the table, that's what we're discussing, just to bring it off the table. We need a, just a simple majority?
Yes.
All right, so I'm bringing it off the table, because I don't believe there's any discussion with that. All right? Well, we can discuss bringing it off the table, why, right?
I suppose you could, yeah, I think that you have the resolution.
The IMA was changed, so if you bring it off the table and amend that resolution to reflect the changes that the county executive made, along with the two folks, Terry and Sean, we could do that just by amending that resolution.
Yes.
Instead of waiting a month and bringing up another one. I believe that's the intent.
Correct.
Okay? So I'm taking this off the table. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, it's off the table. Now I believe you're looking to amend.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose a amendment to, because the IMA was changed, to have two people serve on the landfill board. I propose myself and Sean Bowerman, and also end the amendment to approve the new IMA.
IMA, as changed, as reflected with the changes that the county executive brought forward. All right, is there a second to that amendment?
Second amendment.
All right, discussion on the-
No, I was just going to, I would assume as part of that, you'd want to clean up the title to change the terminology, to know, like, that it's two members and that sort of thing.
All right. Okay. Discussion on the amended resolution. On the amended, on the amendment to the resolution. Discussion. Hearing not all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain. Now on the resolution as amended, is there discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. Resolution 103 is passed, we're on to new business. New business being Resolution 112. It's a resolution appointing a member of the legislature to coordinate cooperative extension in Fulton-McGurham County Association's Board of Directors, Office of the Legislature. Sponsors were Beenyac and White's. Discussion on 112. Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 113 is a resolution amending the 2014 Operating Budget Board of Election. Sponsors, White's and Diamond. Discussion on 113. Barbara?
Are the commissioners here?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us a little bit of explanation about the computer stuff there?
It's for new programs that'll be used for voter records, such as registrations, you know, absentee ballots.
Great, thank you so much, Jamie.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor of 113?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 114 is a resolution adopting introductory local law C of 2014, a local law establishing a hotel or motel occupancy tax in Montgomery County, rescinding Local Law Number Four of 2011. White's and Beenyac were the sponsors. Discussion on 114.
Do we know where we're at at the present date?
How much money?
Yeah.
I don't have the figure.
Aye.
Sean, I think you-
Yeah, I know.
Is the 4% rate quoted pretty much standard in kind of county?
For those who haven't.
Yeah.
I mean, some counties, I don't think all counties have it, do they?
I don't believe all counties have it. It does vary. I think it's more in some places and less in some places. There was at one time a chart that showed the counties and the rates that were charged across the state, but that was several years ago. I'm sure the information's available.
Just one more question, is this the same rate we were heading charge previously?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, on 114, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 115 is a resolution approving the proposed certificate of incorporation and consenting to the formation of the Montgomery County Capital Resource Corporation. Sponsors, Diamond and Beenyac. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 116, resolution amending the local tourism grant program. White's and Diamond were the sponsors. Discussion on 116. Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 117 is a resolution for the reduction of the full-time community service program coordinator position to a part-time position. Koochus and Diamond were the sponsors. Discussion on 117. Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. All right. Resolution appointing a member to the county planning board, District Two. Sponsor, well, I put it out, his chairman approved, and I sponsored it, so it would need a second.
No second.
Roy, seconds. Discussion, if you remember at the last meeting, my district was the only one left vacant. Did find a willing participant, Robert Perry, and Robert, Bob, has agreed, so I offered up his name. I would appreciate the support for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution number 119, resolution amending the 2014 Operating Budget Network Systems, Sheriff's Department. Wheeler, Isabel were the sponsors on 119. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 120, resolution amending the 2014 Operating Budget Memorandum of Agreement between the County of Montgomery, CSA Local 1,000 AFSCME AFL-CIO, for part-time employees coming from the county executive. Sponsors were Wheeler and Isabel. Discussion on 120. This needs two-thirds, because it's an appropriation, and that, right. Okay, so this would need six of nine if it were to pass. Any further discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 121, resolution approving abstract of audited claims. Wheeler, Koochus were the sponsors. Discussion on 121. Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 122, resolution appointing a member to the Audit Committee, Office of the Legislature. Sponsors were Wheeler and Diamond. Do we have some, oh, Joe, Joe, Joe.
Welcome to the club.
Discussing before Joe says no. All of the favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, walk before Joe.
Yay.
123, resolution appointing members to the Capitol Projects Committee, Office of the Legislature. Wheeler, Beenyac were the sponsors. 123, is there any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 124, resolution adopting policy and practice guidelines for the county executive to determine expenditures, limits, and priorities for the 2015 operating budget. Sponsors, Chessy and Wheeler. On 124, is there any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 125, resolution amending the 2014 operating budget, Office of the Legislature. Diamond and Wheeler were the sponsors of 125. Is there discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 126, resolution amending the 2014 operating budget, county executive. On 126, we have Diamond and Koochus as the sponsors. Discussion on 126. Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
One against. 126 passes. 127, resolution accepting bids, 2014 Tax Foreclosure Auction. Sponsors were Wheeler and Koochus. You all have a list. Discussion, you all have a list in front of you, and I believe there is an amendment to be made.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to strike the line for parcel number 43. I know I've had the opportunity to speak with a couple of you, the reason being, there was a pickup in the auction process in which a three parcel, three parcels that went as one ended up being sold separately, creating an issue.
I'll say one.
Oh, we didn't get a second, yeah? I'm sorry. All right, we have a second. Further discussion now? So there's three parcels.
41 and 42 are not on the list.
41 and 42 are not on the list, but 43 made it to the list.
Mr. Mayor, Chair, I handed out a graphic showing these parcels, they're labeled four, five, and six on the packs. five, and six on the tax map. And what occurred, this was the old Povlers Inn lot in Fultonville, about five acres overall, and it was intended to be sold as one, as it always had been, but during the auction process, it was split and what is parcel six was sold to the highest bidder and is included as parcel forty-three on the resolution. The other two parcels ended up going to another bidder who backed out. Now, those two parcels individually cannot be developed due to zoning regulations in the town of Glen. I am sponsoring this amendment so that we can bring four and five up currently and will remain property of Montgomery County, no matter what we do this evening, but by striking line forty-three, we could take all three back into the possession, combine them, and then go out and either have an RFP, request for proposals, or an online auction to sell this property.
Question?
Yes.
And maybe Doug can, when you say combine, you don't mean for the purposes of selling, you mean for the purposes of combining the parcels into one? So you're saying that the Montgomery County will do that?
Yes.
Do you understand what he's saying?
I do, I do. They could be sold, if this amendment passes, the entire block of the three parcels could be sold as one and then have them combined into one parcel on the tax map, or it could be done ahead of that, either way.
What are you suggesting? Are you suggesting that the county combine that?
I'm suggesting combining it, it's my understanding that they were split so that it could be put up for collateral, for different loans. I don't know if that is 100%, but having real property, having real property combine the three parcels so that this is not an issue.
I'm just thinking that the property is more, what's the word, it's more inviting to buyer if it's all one.
Yes, of course.
Well, all I have to say is that even if it hadn't been combined as of the time you sold it, you could stipulate that if you were buying all three or none, so that you wouldn't have the problem that we have right now.
What I was getting at wasn't so much the purchasing of the three as one, but actually making them into one deed.
Mm-hmm.
That's where I'm confused, that's why I don't know if he's talking about...
They would become one deed if they were all sold together, regardless of whether the act of combining them had occurred prior to the sale or not.
Looking back over the past couple decades, whenever one of them is sold, they've all sold.
Right.
They've always been sold jointly, and that was what was supposed to happen in this situation.
And you've talked to Ken also?
Ken and I've talked to the county treasurer, and this is, you know, the best way of cleaning up, you know, cleaning up the situation.
All right. Any further discussion?
Chair, I really, I understand what legislator Weitz is saying, I've given a lot of thought, we spoke earlier today. The problem I have really is the people, Buena Holding bid on forty-three, they were qualified bidders, they tried to bid on the other part, too. The person that ran the bid up didn't pay, couldn't pay the buyer's premium, so it wasn't accepted. The thing is that, I'm, my opinion is that Buena Holding will be penalized because of this, and I don't want to see that happen. We put the thing up in good faith, and they paid for it in good faith, they've had architects come in, they've had contractors come in, so they're out a lot of money, and I'm not sure how we would make them whole if we went through with this. I have no problem combining the two and putting that up for an RFP and, you know, have it sold that way. Another concern would be, you know, and I think our consular had mentioned it, that, you know, we would want it to, are we going to be fortunate enough to get the same amount of money for the whole thing? Legislator Weitz brought up, you know, that it's always been sold as one, the other side of that has never been successful, so I had mentioned to Ryan today, you know, I think the days of having a resort there are probably not going to happen, there's a lot of successful people that tried it and it didn't work. We have a company who owns the property right next door, they purchased the company, they paid tax on it, they're good neighbors, they have a lot of nice plans for that, and I would just hate to see it withdrawn.
Yeah, it is kind of, oh, Martin, go ahead, you had your hand up.
You said you, Ryan, you said that you talked with Glenn.
Wow, yes.
What are their sentiments on that?
You know, and I maybe give the opportunity, there's two representatives from the Holden Corporation if they'd like to speak, you know, but to sum that up is, they're not, you know, obviously not that happy with it, but, you know, this is a situation that shouldn't, you know, it's unfortunate, but we need to remedy the situation.
And also, Roy, you said about combining the two, as in the two that weren't sold?
Yes.
Then they're not valuable if the zoning regulations in the town of Glen don't allow for...
The situation in the, in the town of Glen, there's a minimal, minimum developable lot size as well as frontage, and with setbacks, and those two parcels even combined wouldn't qualify to be ever developed. So there's two condemned properties that, in a couple, in many people's opinion, need to be raised, and the likelihood of getting that off the county's coffers, to have somebody come in, buy a parcel that they need to come in, tear down two buildings, and not be able to develop it, is difficult, and by combining the three, it's, it becomes nearly five acres of riverfront property right off the thruway that is extremely valuable property, and it would be a shame to see it, you know, half of it be developed and the rest, and the rest sit there.
I think it would be of interest, if I could, Chair, to the neighbors on both sides, I'm sure Duncan knows would definitely like to have more room, and I'm sure Buena Holding would like to have more room, and also there's the option, I would think, of a variance in town for development of, like, a quiz nose or something.
I wasn't at the auction, but to Roy's point, if I were bidding and I was a successful bidder, and, you know, I'd probably want my bid to go through and give the property that I had. My question was, did those bidders that were successful in this have the opportunity to bid on the other two? Why was that pulled? Why were the other two off?
It's my understanding that the...
Maybe they want them.
The three were put up, the successful bidder for forty-three was interested in all three, all three parcels, however, they were put up as one group, and when they got to the highest bid, they awarded parcel six on the map to the highest bidder and awarded the other two parcels to the second highest bidder, and those second two parcels were not bid on independently. And that's, that's what yielded the situation, that then they did not make the down payment.
So they were the only other bidders?
We won the bid, and it went as one piece of property. We talked to the bank, the bank said that you guys, Montgomery County was going to sell it as a whole parcel, and they were going to return, offer it as three individual parcels, so we wanted our part, we did it, we won, and then the other two parcels, the person that reneged on the money said that they'd take the other two parcels, we don't deal, we didn't even get a chance to rebid, which we thought it was kind of flabbergasted to us that we didn't get an opportunity to bid on the other two pieces of property.
So there were two bids, two bidders?
Right.
You and, and the other, and the other was unsuccessful?
They, right.
The other was unsuccessful, so you were the only other bidder that had interest in these other two parcels?
Right.
Is that right?
All.
Why don't we just sell them the other two pieces of property?
Upon talking with our treasurer, the only way we can get rid of those is by online auction and RFP, we can't just sell them outright.
And the other thing is, the other, the other two buildings are being repaired.
I mean, it went through an auction.
It did.
They were selling them as one piece, something got screwed up along the way, these gentlemen want those two.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we can table this and have our county attorney try to work on it?
Yes.
And we can...
May I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless it's a motion, I don't want to interrupt. I completely agree with what legislator Beaneck just suggested. I'm learning about this, I was at the auction, but left shortly before all of this occurred. I would suggest that you go forward with the amendment to remove parcel forty-three at the present time and proceed with the others, and then we'll, we'll address the situation and determine what would be the most prudent and fair way to work this out, and undoubtedly it'll require further action of the legislature at next month's meeting.
I mean, I have no problem taking that one off.
Exactly.
I have no problem taking that one off, but I do have a problem with not giving it to them if we decide to sell it, and they've already bid on it and won it, I have, I would have a problem with that.
I have.
I would have a problem with, with taking that off, so if we're going to say, look, we're just going to take it off tonight so we can figure this out, and maybe those other two can be combined so they can have it, fine, I mean, let's, let's take it off and let's work through it.
That would be your other, your other option would be to go forward and give parcel forty-three to the Buena Holding company?
Or nobody, or nobody. You know, take it off tonight, and either hang on it, nobody gets it yet, till we straighten it out, but if somebody's going to get it...
Oh, well, no one would get it until it would be straightened out if you delete it from the, from this list.
Right.
The other option would be to go ahead and sell it per the auction results to Buena Holding, and then we'll have to put our heads together and figure out what to do with the remaining two smaller parcels, whether these folks...
We really got to go to auction for those two?
Well, you can do a request, if you will, Chair, if I may, you can do a request for proposal, and that eliminates the need to do, according, according to our county treasurer, you can do an online auction mid-year, or a request for proposal, at which point the only other stipulation would be online auction would require highest, going with the highest bidder. Request for proposal could come in, and it could be anything, and it would require a simple majority vote of the legislature to award the sale of that property, the three combined.
There's a chance we could end up with even less money.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, other than removing this property from, from the list of sales, I don't think I would support anything else until we get a chance to, to discuss the matter. What's wrong with just taking a step back, the mistake has been made, and we really need to hear more, I think, to understand better what has happened before we make a decision. We might end up at one of these conclusions we've already addressed tonight, we may not. There are other possibilities, RFPs, and highest and best use, all those other factors. So I just wanted to reiterate that that's what I would support, removing that from the list and then addressing it at a future meeting.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to table, I wouldn't want to table the whole thing because there's, you know, the auction is undone and over, right? But I don't have a problem holding off, I just, you know, when people take the time out of their day to go to the auction, bid on properties that we put up, they're successful, and then we tell them.
Right.
You know, it's kind of, but I understand where Ryan's getting at.
I wholeheartedly agree, the bidder, the highest bidder, did everything correctly, and it's in a really unfortunate situation that we...
What were the other two bids on the other two properties?
As I understand it, it wasn't an actual bid on those properties, they were...
It was awarded to the second highest bidder on the three, as, as it was explained to me, it sounds really muddled.
It's a real mistake, and I just don't think Buena Holding should be penalized for, you know, the auctioneer's mistake, and I don't see any reason why parcel six shouldn't go through, and then we'll decide, we won't, as a county, decide what we want to do with the other two, knowing that, you know, it's, it's not as valuable as being all together, or it has to be raised, or whatever it is, it's still, it's our problem, and I don't think we should put our problem on a qualified bidder.
There's something to that, too, really, there isn't anything wrong with the way that parcel forty-three was bid, it's just that...
I agree with legislator Diamond, but, you know, I really don't know what to do next, you know, maybe our county attorney can tell us, what's the best way to go right now?
Look, I can tell you that, legislator Beaneck, I will only be able to tell you that after I know how successful we are with the route that we choose to pursue here.
I mean, the downside of accepting it is the county gets $130,000, the parcel is on the tax roll, and we have a company that we know is going to develop it, is going to pay their taxes with enhanced Riverside Drive, and, so that's the downside, so I'll just throw that out there.
Can I ask these gentlemen?
Sure. Gentlemen, not to put you on the spot, but was it your intention to bid on the other two parcels when you went there?
Yes, yes.
And you were not given that opportunity?
No, the auctioneer, this, we bought it, and then next thing you know, the other, the other guy took the same price for the other two, and it was over.
And then, and he defaulted?
And he defaulted.
Ethically, why was this guy bidding if he knew what his funds were? Why was he...
They were the only other bidders.
Why was he bidding and bidding and bidding, except raising price, maybe he had...
And also, was, is it true that the two smaller parcels were not, did not receive bids separately, that it was the same amount of money that you folks bid successfully for parcel forty-three?
Right.
Was assumed to be that the sale price of the combined two smaller lots?
So they, we bought it for that X amount of dollars, and he came, the other guy came and did, the auctioneer offered the other two parcels for the same price, so we got three acres for this amount, he only got one acre and one acre for the same amount that we paid for three.
Right.
You thought you were buying three?
And, right.
Because that's the way it was advertised?
Right.
I mean, this is the way this thing was advertised?
Mr. Chairman, I just think it's unfair to make a decision just based on some of the things that we're hearing right now, but I think, I think we just need to understand better. I mean, on its face, I certainly support selling it over there, but not at this time. We have to, just understand a little bit more, I think we need a little more time, that's all.
All right, so there's a amendment on the floor to pull forty-three. Is there any other discussion on pulling forty-three?
To what end?
His amendment to this resolution, to accept all these and all the money, he has an amendment to pull just forty-three off of the list for now. So, so that would pull it off if it was successful, we'd talk about it, we'd get some more information, then when you vote on this resolution, you'll be voting on everything else other than forty-three, that would be off.
All right.
That's what your amendment is?
Mm-hmm.
And we had a second to that?
Yes, we did.
Who seconded that?
I seconded that.
We're good? So is there any other...
I just want to say that, could we note that it won't affect anything with the bid if we pull it? Everything just stays the same so they don't...
Well, you can't, once you pull it, it's, you're back to, once you pull it, there is no bidder. That was the problem I was having with it, because they were the successful bidder, once we pull it, it's back to...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, no, the resolution, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we be able to vote on it as if it were just being presented separately in the same format?
Once we pull it off, we are now accepting your bid, it's back to zero.
Because we're not rejecting it.
That's right.
Which, that's true, we're not rejecting it, we're not, we're not acting on it.
No.
We're not rejecting it.
Right.
It's a good point.
So it's our understanding then that we're not rejecting your bid of 135? So it's our understanding, then, that we're not rejecting your bid of 135, we're simply pulling it off?
Right, that's correct.
Whenever we've pulled off before in the past, they've been rejected, that means that they were rejected.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the understanding that I have right now is that we are not rejecting their bid.
Okay, if that's, if we're all agreeing to that?
Yes.
All right, because every other time we've ever pulled anything, it's, that's to reject the bid, right or wrong?
I'm concerned about this time.
Well, I know.
That has been, that has money whacked us, yes.
My question would be if we're not rejecting it, then why aren't we accepting it?
We're not accepting it at this time, because there are issues that need to be resolved. At least, that's the motion that I intended to make.
I understand what you're saying, but our only concern is the other two parts, two parcels, I mean, that's what's up for discussion. So if we're not rejecting it, you're not going to be combining it into three, or then you would be rejecting it. So I don't understand why we wouldn't go ahead and accept it and then concentrate on the two parcels that no one bid on.
Respectfully, Roy, I just, I want the opportunity to understand that what we think happened, happened in the way that it happened.
No, I understand what you're saying, I just, I don't want to tell people penalized for our mistake.
Well, I hope that they're not.
What's that? No, I mean, I really, I would hope that they're not, but...
I'm in agreement with what, if, if, we're all in agreement that this is not a rejection, I'm good with pulling it, because that just means you wait a month, or if I needed to call a special meeting, we could do that. If we had this figured out in a week, I'd call a special meeting and accept it. I was always under the impression that when we rejected, it was over, so if it's not over and you guys agree to it, that's good by me.
Counselor, has there been other county parcels that are sold by us, depending on the amount? I noticed, like, for instance, I'm not sure how many years ago, there was a, on Midway Alley in Florida, there was a building that no one bid on the auction, and the county ended up selling it.
Yes, if it goes through the auction process, through the foreclosure and the auction process, the county does have more latitude than it does in trying to sell it privately before it goes through the auction process.
Well, that's why I was asking earlier if we could just sell these two properties to these people and get this over with.
Is there an order amendment?
That's why I was asking that earlier.
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Mr. Chairman, can you call a meeting to order, please?
Thank you.
Well, I think there's some discussion going on about selling, selling the other two parcels now.
Only because of what Doug just said. Doug just said that once it goes through the auction process, that the county then has the latitude to do what they want with them, because nobody bid on them and they're back in our hands. Well, that's what I just said, but we just sell them to the people that want to pay for them. But again, I understand, I don't know that you want to make that decision, you know, tonight, so as long as, you know, let's talk about it, as long as we're not rejecting it, I'm...
We're not rejecting them. I think we're all clear on what's on.
All right.
So you're saying that there's no chance that they'll lose property number forty-three or proper number six?
No, no.
You're not rejecting them? Postponing our decision on that one thing.
Exactly.
No, I understand the amendment, I'm saying you're not, what you're telling me is that you're not rejecting the bid.
Right.
So, I know, if you're not rejecting it, it seems that you're accepting it.
You can take part to, for, to further, get in further information.
Well, these parts are involved.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I want to table the entire list.
Oh, my gosh.
Motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, that is discussion and debate, there's a motion to table, and there's a second to table the entire resolution.
Hold on.
Are you talking about the amendment? Talking about the entire resolution? What we're discussing, the amendment?
There's no discussion, correct?
Right.
Okay, roll call on tabling the entire resolution.
Can you say why you're doing it or not?
No, it's no discussion.
Legislator DuChasse.
Aye.
Legislator Wheeler. No. Legislator Isabel.
No.
Legislator Cuchus.
No.
Legislator Kelly.
No.
Chairman Quacken Bush.
No.
Legislator Diamond.
Yes.
Legislator White.
No.
Legislator Beniac.
No.
Fail.
Okay, back on the resolution, we have an amendment.
Can I call the question?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
All right. Motion to call the question.
If you want to do by motion, technically, that would require a second.
I'll second.
On that measure.
Roll call, can I call the question, Cheryl? This is on whether or not we end debate and call the question, on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Legislator White.
Yes.
Legislator Beniac.
Yes.
Legislator DuChasse.
Aye.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
Yes.
Legislator Cuchus.
Aye.
Legislator Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Quacken Bush.
No.
Legislator Diamond.
No.
Pass.
Okay, calling the question on the amendment.
Yes.
As presented. Roll call.
Of the original...
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment, forty-three.
Of the amendment that I made.
Could you, could you repeat it, though?
The amendment is to pull forty-three, number forty-three off, that's the entire amendment. Pull it off. Pull it off, not being rejected.
Legislator White.
Yes.
Legislator Beniac.
Yes.
Legislator DuChasse.
Aye.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
Yes.
Legislator Cuchus.
Yes.
Legislator Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Quacken Bush.
Yes.
Legislator Diamond.
No.
Pass.
Okay, on the resolution as amended. Discussion. I said last month, my brother's got a couple parcels on here, I'm abstaining from voting on it.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
Yes.
Legislator Cuchus.
Yes.
Legislator Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Quacken Bush.
Abstain.
Legislator Diamond.
No.
Legislator White.
Yes.
Legislator Beniac.
Yes.
Legislator DuChasse.
Aye.
Pass.
Okay, 127 passes, 128, resolution authorizing county treasurer to disperse mortgage tax money, sponsors Wheeler and Diamond. Discussion on 128. Hearing on all those, a favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 129, resolution, as an add-on resolution that we suspended the rules for, and it was to accept the resolution in support of ending the tobacco marketing in stores presented by Reality Check, all sponsor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ryan? Discussion on 129.
Couple housekeeping spellings, the second to the last sentence, I think it could be loose, the "e" at the end.
Yes.
And then the last sentence, I think we need to just put a period after establishments and strike the "e" at the end.
Can we consider those typos, or do you want to make an amendment?
Yep.
Okay, on the resolution, all those, there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 130 is a resolution changing the meeting time of the June 24th full board meeting to 5:30 from 7 o'clock. Is there a sponsor? I'll sponsor, is there a second?
Second.
Terry, discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries, anything under other? Barbara, and then Martin. Ladies before gentlemen.
I was just going to motion to adjourn.